Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture, and that's a friendly reminder for our folks who are supporting bills passing today. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the Chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the Chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Bacher.
March.
Brannon.
Present.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Feliz. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamorato.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Feliz. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamorato.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Feliz. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamorato.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers.
Present.
Wrestler.
I'm here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez. Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov. Williams. One.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Juang.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Borelli. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Dr. David Watson of Calvary Chapel, which is located at thirty Maple Parkway in Staten Island.
Let us pray. The Lord is my light and my salvation, whom shall I fear? The Lord is the stronghold of my life, of whom shall I fear? Most high God, and heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. Thank you for your presence in our lives. Thank you for this city that we live in and that we love, the home of the New York Liberty, the world champions. We know you love it more than we ever could. We ask your guidance for this body and for its speaker, Speaker Adams. We ask for wisdom that comes from you, O God, as we reach out to you today for your help. The tasks here, the situations here are beyond us. We need you. Please minister, Lord, to each of the fifty-one council members and their staffs. Heavenly Father, please be their primary physician when they're sick, their wise counselor when they don't know what to do, their financial advisor when they're trying to figure out all these budgets and all the other things associated with it, and their trusted friend. May they cast all their care on you, for you are their concern. As they carry out their stewardship for the city, may they see themselves as doing your work, knowing that they will be rewarded by you. When they get tired, please remind them of the words of the scriptures that say, "They who wait upon the Lord will renew their strength; they shall mount up with wings like eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." Please bless them, please bless this body. Indeed, Lord, please bless and heal our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. I would now like to ask Councilmember Camilla Hanks to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today it is my honor to welcome a remarkable leader and servant of faith, Pastor Dave Watson, Senior Pastor of Calvary Chapel of Staten Island. For nearly thirty-five years, Pastor Watson has shepherded a vibrant and diverse congregation, providing not just spiritual guidance, but hope, comfort, and belonging to countless families on the North Shore. His church stands as a living testament to the power of faith to unite people across all backgrounds and cultures. Pastor Watson has committed his life to serving others with compassion and humility. His ministry is a reflection of both his academic dedication, holding a Doctor of Divinity of New York Theological Seminary, and advanced degrees from Liberty Baptist Seminary and Liberty University, and his deep care for community. So on behalf of our community, I offer deep gratitude for all that he has done and continues to do to strengthen the spirit and unity that defines the forty-ninth district. I motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full. Thank you.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Crystal Hudson.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
M seventy-five, Board of Health appointment.
Withdrawn.
Communication from City, County, and Borough Offices?
M seventy-six, Commissioner of Elections appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M seventy-seven and M seventy-eight.
Coupled on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Bacher.
Permission to vote on all land use items, call-ups, and items on today's agenda? Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Bacher, can you repeat?
Permission to vote on all land use items, call-ups, and items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Brannon.
Permission to vote on all land use items, call-ups, and items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Yes.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Yes.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamorato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse. Osay.
Aye.
Palladino. Councilmember Palladino, land use call-ups. I'm sorry, aye on all. Thank you. Powers.
Permission to vote on all land use items, call-ups, and items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Carr. Thank you, Councilmember. Salamanca.
Permission to vote on all land use item, call-ups, and items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Carr. Thank you, Councilmember. Salamanca.
Permission to vote on all land use item, call-ups, and items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Carr. Thank you, Councilmember. Salamanca.
Permission to vote on all land use item, call-ups?
Permission granted.
Thank you, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov. Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Madam President, may be excused to vote now on the general orders?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote aye on all, with the exception of resos six twenty-three, six twenty-four, six twenty-five, and six twenty-six, on which I vote no, and I abstain on intro nine ninety-one. Thank you.
Juang.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Land use call-ups, Councilmember Mealy?
Aye.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of fifty in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by acknowledging the loss of Paul Kautu, a construction worker who was injured and killed on the job earlier this month in Councilmember Caban's district in Queens. All workers deserve to be safe on the job, and my thoughts are with his family and his loved ones. Last week, there was a fatal fire in Councilmember Brewer's district. A seventy-two-year-old man lost his life while three firefighters were injured. Two days later, lithium-ion battery, a lithium-ion battery sparked a deadly fire in Councilmember Vernikov's district, taking the life of a sixty-nine-year-old grandfather and injuring three others. My heart goes out to the families and friends of these victims. While we have made much progress on fire safety by passing laws to curb threats from dangerous lithium-ion batteries, we know there's continued work to be done. Yesterday, the council Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises held a fourteen-and-a-half-hour public hearing from nine-thirty a.m. to midnight to hear from the public about the City of Yes zoning for housing opportunity proposal, and I'm giving Chair Kevin Riley a ginormous shout-out. For his great leadership during this marathon hearing, as well as members of the Subcommittee and all of my colleagues who were here, most importantly, I want to thank all of the New Yorkers who testified in person on Zoom and stayed up late last night to watch. Our public hearings are designed to encourage all members of the public to share their thoughts and feedback on proposals before this body. It is a major part of the work we do, to listen to people of this city and respect their voices, regardless of whether we may or may not agree. We use the public feedback at our hearings to shape our proposals and our decisions. That is what good governance and representative democracy is about, and as a council, we will always welcome all New Yorkers' voices right here into the people's house. We have a few cultural days of significance to acknowledge today. October twenty-third is Hungarian Republic Day. The twenty-fourth is Zambian Independence Day, and the twenty-ninth is Turkey's Republic Day. I wish all New Yorkers who are observing a meaningful celebration. October thirty-first is Halloween, kids. Whether you're trick-or-treating with your children, watching a scary movie, or dressing up, please be safe and do have fun. Also on the thirty-first is Diwali, the Festival of Lights. It is a significant celebration for our Hindu, Sikh, and Jain communities. I hope everyone who celebrates has a festive Diwali. I also want to wish a happy early birthday to Councilmembers Vicky Palladino, whose birthday is on the twenty-eighth, and Councilmember Oswald Feliz, whose birthday is on the twenty-ninth. I hope you both enjoy your special day. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use item. One Thirty-Fifth Street rezoning will facilitate the development of a seven-story mixed-use building with approximately sixty units, including fifteen permanently affordable units under MIH, as well as commercial and community facility space in Councilmember Abreu's district. The council is modifying the application to require MIH Option One. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. Four pre-considered resolutions sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, which would amend and restate the property tax rates for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five in accordance with enacted state legislation. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for seven buildings in Councilmember Salam's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for one building in Councilmember Joseph's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for one building in Councilmember Rivera's district. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution one ninety-three, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, would designate October as Youth Empowerment Month annually in the City of New York to recognize, appreciate, and celebrate the successes of young people and their contributions to school and community life. Resolution five oh eight, also sponsored by Councilmember Williams, would designate October tenth annually as Casey Benjamin Day in the City of New York to celebrate the genius of his music and his unique contributions to a variety of music genres. Resolution five eighteen, sponsored by Majority Whip Selvina Brooks Powers, would declare October as Jamaican Heritage Month in celebration of the rich history, culture, and contributions of Jamaican communities in New York City. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmembers Crystal Hudson and Tiffany Caban would celebrate the New York Liberty winning the two thousand and twenty-four WNBA championship. In their first in the history of the franchise, it would also declare October twentieth as New York Liberty Day annually in the City of New York. We thank, we applaud the liberty in this house. Yes, we do. We thank our staff members Regina Paul and Chad Benjamin. Introduction seven ninety-seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require the Department of Education to report annually a list of all student clubs and organizations at each school. The DOE would be required to report if any student club or organization has authorization to conduct its activities off-school grounds. We thank our staff member Nadia Jean-François. Introduction seven thirty-three A, also sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, would require the DOE to report annually on information related to career and technical education or CTE programs. We thank our staff members Nadia Jean-François and Matthew Hill. Introduction seven seventy-one A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the DOE to provide parents with information about the interpretation and translation services that DOE offers, including information on how to access such services and examples of how the services might be used. We once again thank our staff member Nadia Jean-François. Introduction four sixty-eight A, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, would require the Department of Transportation to make information available on their website regarding traffic control device and other speed reducer requests. The bill would require more searchable details, providing clarity about traffic safety requests made by the public, community boards, and elected officials. We thank our staff members Mark Chen, Connor Mealy, Kevin Katauski, and John Basile. Introduction eighty-seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would expand reporting requirements on the demographics and outcomes of youth who are in the juvenile justice system. We thank our staff member Christina Yellamati. Finally, introduction nine ninety-one C, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would establish a licensing program for New York City hotels with the goal of promoting health and safety. New York City has long-regulated businesses in the tourism industry to advance the safety and well-being of New Yorkers and visitors. For example, sightseeing buses and guides and pedicab drivers are all currently required to obtain a license from DCWP, allowing the city to enforce health and safety regulations while giving consumers the information they need. This legislation seeks to align the hotel industry with this standard for front-desk coverage, security, and cleanliness. We thank our staff members Rachel Cordero, Natalie Melzer, and Sarah Swain. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Stevens.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you to our Madam Speaker and my colleagues for continuing to support and fight for the advancements of our city educational system. And today, I am a proud champion of two critical pieces of legislation that brings greater transparency and accountability to New York City education system. Intro seven ninety-seven, which mandates the Department of Education to report on student clubs and organizations at each school. Student clubs play a pivotal role in the personal and social development of young people and requires the DOE to provide information on facilitating advisors and off-campus activities that are better evaluated and resources and support the availability to our young people. Intro seven ninety-three, focused on the future of workforce of our city by requiring the Department of Education to report on information and career technical education programs, CTE. By providing annual reports, this will have us have metrics such as student enrollment, internship participation, post-graduation outcomes. This information will allow us to enhance CTE program more effectively in supporting and providing our community with the necessary tools to ensure the workforce has higher, for workforce and higher education. Transparency in our city is important, especially when it comes to investing in the future of our young people who walk the school hallways daily. The reality is that they will be replacing us one day, and we need to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to be successful. Let's continue to ensure that students have equal access to programs and activity that foster leadership, creativity, and, most importantly, community engagement. I would like to thank my staff and committee staff and Chair Rita Joseph for helping me get this bill across the finish line, and with that, thank you. And I ask all my colleagues to vote yes on this legislation, these legislations.
Thank you, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Menon.
Thank you so much. I'm thrilled that New York City will finally join other cities in licensing hotels. Licensing is a critical regulatory tool that DCWP uses to regulate over forty-five-thousand businesses, such as barber shops and parking garages in over forty industries. While the hotel industry is an important economic driver for our great city and the majority of hotels are wonderful places to stay, there is desperate need for regulation. As mentioned by the New York Times, oversight of the hotel industry has essentially been laissez-faire. Hotels that host criminals can be difficult to shut down, as we saw all too well in Kew Gardens, Queens, with the Umbrella Hotel, when hundreds of neighbors complained about that hotel, and finally, in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a murder. The city tried to shut the hotel down, but had difficulty doing so, in large part because it was not licensed. Hotel-related complaints to DCWP have doubled in the past four years. There have also been over fourteen thousand criminal complaints to the NYPD about hotels and motels and thirty-nine murders. That is why the five district attorneys, the New York Attorney General, HTC, Central Labor Council, thirty-two BJ, DC thirty-seven, NISN, and the PBA, and over forty council members have signed on and supported the bill. The Safe Hotels Act would ensure protections for communities and guests. It requires hotels maintain the cleanliness of each guest room, equip all core employees with panic buttons, and provide human trafficking training. The Safe Hotels Act prohibits subcontracting in larger hotels, which will ensure the hotel operator is accountable for what occurs on hotel premises, rather than shifting responsibility for day-to-day operations to a third party. This will result in important public safety measures. I want to in particular thank HTC for their incredible leadership and support. I want to thank Hannock and the other stakeholders who gave us valuable feedback, and I want to thank Speaker Adams, Jeremy John, Jeff Baker, Rachel Cordero, Sarah Swain, Natalie Melzer, Jonathan Shutt, Brandon Jordan, and Mercedes Anderson, and I urge all of my colleagues to vote aye on this important legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Children and Youth, intro eighty-seven A, juvenile justice statistics.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, intro nine ninety-one C, licensing hotels.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, intro seven thirty-three A, technical education programs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro seven seventy-one A, translation services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro seven ninety-seven A, student organizations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered reso six twenty-two, transparency resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered reso six twenty-three through pre-considered reso six twenty-six, property class shares and tax rates.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU one eighty-two and reso six thirty-three through pre-considered LU one eighty-four and reso six thirty-five, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, reso five seventy-nine, approving the appointment of Dr. Mohammed Khalid, Civilian Complaint Review Board.
Coupled on general orders.
M seventy-one, and reso six thirty-six, approving the appointment of Uddhram Raj Rampershad, City Planning Commissioner.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, intro four sixty-eight A, DOT website information.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU one forty-nine and reso six thirty-seven through LU one fifty-two and reso six forty, hundred, Thirty-Fifth Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I would like to congratulate Hotel Trades Council and its members for fighting tooth and nail to get this bill across the finish line, and I'm glad we're gonna get it done today.
32BJ, DC37, NISN, the PBA, and over 40 council members have signed on and supported the bill. The Safe Hotels Act would ensure protections for communities and guests. It requires hotels maintain the cleanliness of each guest room, equip all core employees with panic buttons, and provide human trafficking training. The Safe Hotels Act prohibits subcontracting in larger hotels, which will ensure the hotel operator is accountable for what occurs on hotel premises rather than shifting responsibility for day-to-day operations to a third party. This will result in important public safety measures. I want to in particular thank HTC for their incredible leadership and support. I want to thank HANIC and the other stakeholders who gave us valuable feedback. And I want to thank Speaker Adams, Jeremy John, Jeff Baker, Rachel Cordero, Sarah Swain, Natalie Meltzer, Jonathan Shutt, Brandon Jordan, and Mercedes Anderson. And I urge all of my colleagues to vote aye on this important legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Children and Youth. Intro 87A, juvenile justice statistics.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. Intro 991C, licensing hotels.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education. Intro 733A, technical education programs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 771A, translation services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 797A, student organizations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance. Preconsidered Reso 622, Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered Reso 623 through preconsidered Reso 626, property class shares and tax rates.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU182 and Reso 633 through preconsidered LU184 and Reso 635, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. Reso 579, approving the appointment of Dr. Mohamed Khalid, Civilian Complaint Review Board.
Coupled on general orders.
M71. And Reso 636, approving the appointment of Uddshram Raj Bhampershad, City Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. Intro 468A, DOT Website Information.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar. LU149 and Reso 637 through LU152 and Reso 640, 135th Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I would like to congratulate Hotel Trades Council and its members for fighting tooth and nail to get this bill across the finish line. And I'm glad we're gonna get it done today. I vote aye.
Ariola.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I'd just like to say on Intro 991C, I'd like to really commend the leadership of Councilmember Julie Menon, the Speaker, her entire team, the Legislative Division, my partner on the Peninsula, Selvina Brooks-Powers, Keith Powers. We all met multiple times to make sure that each and every type of hotel received the proper attention it needed so that they would not be hurt by any broader-based bill. And we were able to really carve out where we needed to. But the amount of time, the amount of Zoom calls, the amount of phone calls that were made, really, I cannot thank Julie Menon enough and the entire team. Bob from HTC, incredible job. And my smaller hotels that are good actors that are under 100 rooms really were taken into consideration and given a voice at those meetings to state what their needs were. So on that, I vote aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks-Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I'd like to congratulate all of those passing bills today. And I'd like to just say on the record that I'm proud of the agreement we were able to reach on Introduction 991, which ensures that hotel workers can thrive and work in a safe and secure environment. This is a significant win for our workers, recognizing the vital role they play in supporting our local economy. I want to extend my gratitude to the Hotel and Game and Trades Council, the Restaurant Alliance, and the Hotel Association of New York City, as well as Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmember Julie Menon, Councilmember Joanne Ariola, the entire staff, for the open-minded approach and thoughtfulness through the negotiation process. And together, we have worked to balance the needs of workers as first and foremost, but also taken into account the concerns of local businesses, particularly in areas such as the Rockaway Peninsula. And so with that, I vote aye. Thank you.
Ariola.
I vote no on Resos 623, 624, 625, and 626. Thank you.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
I vote no on preconsidered resolutions 623, 624, 625, and 626, as well as Introduction 991C. An aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you so much. I also want to extend gratitude and congratulations to Julie Menon for her work on the Hotel Safety Act. I also want to congratulate HTC and all of the unions who really truly ensured that workers were top of mind on this bill, that will ensure that we have an industry, a hotel industry, that takes into consideration the lives of workers. And so I wanted to congratulate everyone, and I vote aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Felice.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Want to congratulate the Hotel Trades Council and Councilmember Menon on getting 991C to the finish line, a bill that's gonna help improve life and safety for hotel workers and so many others. Aye on all. Thank you.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all, with the exception of preconsidered Reso 623, 624, 625, and 626. Thank you.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all, except for preconsidered Reso 623, 624, 625, and 626, of which I vote no.
Hudson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Just want to congratulate again Councilwoman Menon, as well as HTC and all of its workers on the passage of Intro 991. And I am aye on all, with the exception of Resolution 579, for which I vote no. Thank you.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all, and congrats to all my colleagues today.
Lewis.
Aye on all. Congrats to all bill sponsors.
Mamarato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Reso 623, 624, 625, 626, and Intro 991C. Thank you.
Thank you. Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
I want to congratulate everyone who's on the bills that vote aye on all and no on Reso 623. Thank you, and congratulations, Julie Menon.
Thank you. Menon.
I proudly vote aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote for one second?
Permission granted.
Congratulations to my colleagues, Julie Menon, and of course HTC, especially Bob for listening. And it's time to be responsible in New York City. And when I put some question on the floors and stuff, it's just making sure that whatever we do, we hold ourselves accountable and the people that we serve. Thank you, and I vote aye to all.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Reso 623, 624, 625, 626, and no on Intro 991C. Thank you.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all, and congrats HTC.
Riley.
Just want to say congratulations to Councilmember Menon, and I vote aye on all. And you too, Councilmember Stevens.
Rivera.
Congratulations to all of my colleagues, and I vote aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Congratulations to my colleagues, and I vote aye on all.
Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Councilmember Menon mentioned that the Umbrella Hotel was the nexus for the Safe Hotels Act, and that hotel is in my district. And I want to thank Councilmember Menon and HTC and everyone involved and the Speaker for doing this bill because now we won't have to deal with hotels like that ever again. And it was something that we worked on for a long time. And I also want to congratulate my constituents from Kew Gardens, who actually came and testified on behalf of the bill. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov. Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye on all.
Juang.
I accept Reso 623, 624, 625, 626. The other, all, aye on all.
Thank you. Borelli.
I'd like to be recorded as a no for Reso 623, 624, 625, and 626, and Intro 991C. On the rest, I vote aye.
Thank you. Farias.
I vote aye on all, and congratulations to my colleagues.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And Intro 991C, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And Resolution 579, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And Resos 624, 625, and 626, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And Resolution 623, which was adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Apologies, just want to make a correction to the record with the exception of Introduction 991-C, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, and 1 abstention. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to the committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into discussion of resolutions. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hudson, followed by Caban, then Brooks-Powers.
Let's go Liberty! I want to congratulate our very own New York Liberty, whose home court at the Barclay Center is in the 35th District, for winning their first-ever WNBA championship. They've brought championship basketball back to New York City after more than 50 years. And I'm proud to be introducing Resolution 629 today, along with Councilmember Caban, declaring October 20th as New York Liberty Day in the City of New York. We're looking forward, yes, clap it up for the New York Liberty! We're looking forward to hosting our champions right here at City Hall tomorrow, where we can all come together to celebrate this momentous achievement and remember, when we invest in women, we win. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Caban, followed by Majority Whip Brooks-Powers.
Thank you. The New York Liberty are the best of New York, and I couldn't be more proud to be a lifelong Liberty loyal. I made my mom take me to an open practice back in '98, and I have never looked back. The Liberty persevered through a tough loss last season. They met the moment, making bold decisions, starting feebleish for the playoffs, throwing Sabley in in the final minutes in a stroke of genius, despite those five players never logging a single minute on the court together that entire season. When they got cold the last two games, the Stars found a million different ways to contribute, while others who don't normally get the shine stepped up on offense. They showed courage, they showed innovation, they showed creativity, and they did it all while fielding and rising above homophobic and sexist threats amid rising fame. The Liberty embody the best of us, working as a team, uplifting one another, and proving that diversity is our greatest strength. They bring our city world-class athleticism and talent through grit, love, and determination, led by Black women, queer women, and immigrant women. The New York Liberty deserve to be honored by our city. And to wrap it up, I am so proud to be sponsoring Reso 629 to make October 20th New York Liberty Day annually in honor of the day they clinched the WNBA championship. As Liberty Loyal's know, we all we got, we all we need, and now we got a championship, so go Liberty!
Thank you, councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Majority Whip Brooks-Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It is such an honor to be before my colleagues today as the proud daughter of Jamaican immigrants and ask for your support on Resolution 518, which designates October as Jamaican Heritage Month in New York City. By establishing Jamaican Heritage Month in New York City, we recognize the rich history and enduring legacy of Jamaica and honor the incredible contributions Jamaicans have made both here and around the world. I am, again, proud to introduce this legislation and look forward to celebrating Jamaican heritage not only this October, but for years to come in New York City. I'd like to acknowledge that we are joined today by Jamaica's Consul General to New York, Alcee Ann Wilson. I'd also like to thank Chair Rivera, Speaker Adams, and our co-sponsors for their support. And I encourage everyone to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, members. I'm going to pause for one second as we're working something out with a member, and we'll get right back to the agenda.
Recognizing Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I ask for unanimous consent from the body to amend my vote.
Any objections? Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote no on Reso 579, and yes, aye on all the rest. Thank you.
I'm going to read into the record a revised vote on Resolution 579, which was adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Seeing no one else signed up to speak for discussion of resolutions, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 193 designates October as Youth Empowerment Month annually in the City of New York to recognize, appreciate, and celebrate the successes of young people and their contributions to school and community life. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 508 designates October 10th annually as Casey Benjamin Day in the City of New York and celebrating the genius of his music and his unique contributions to a variety of music genres. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 518 declares October as Jamaican Heritage Month in New York City. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Preconsidered Resolution 629 celebrates the New York Liberty's winning of the 2024 Women's National Basketball Association Championship and declaring October 20th as New York Liberty Day annually in the City of New York. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hudson, followed by Lewis, then Brewer.
Good afternoon again, colleagues. As you know, our city is home to a significant and growing population of older adults. And today, I'm introducing Intro 1092, a crucial piece of legislation aimed at increasing access to vital anti-fraud information so we can help protect our older adult communities here in New York City. In 2023 alone, scams specifically targeting older adults aged 60 and over resulted in over $3.4 billion in losses. These losses are not just statistics, but the hard-earned savings and financial security of our beloved older adults, many of whom are living on fixed incomes. This bill will ensure our older adult population has access to the resources they need to recognize potential scams, report fraudulent activity, and protect their financial well-being. By equipping older New Yorkers with knowledge, we empower them to make informed decisions and to seek help when needed. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Lewis, followed by Brewer, then Salam.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. On September 15th, as two NYPD officers sought to subdue a fare evader on the L train in Brooklyn, nine shots were fired, leaving a police officer a suspect and two innocent bystanders wounded. Gregory Delpeche, 49-years-old, an employee at Woodhaw Hospital, was shot in the back of the head sustaining a serious brain injury. 26-year-old Carrie Galhao was left with a bullet lodged in her leg, which will remain there for the rest of her life. This incident will alter the course of their lives forever, an unfortunate and irreversible outcome incurred due to negligence by those who were sworn to protect us.
outcome incurred due to negligence by those who were sworn to protect us. This tragedy results from a larger issue that demands our attention and decisive action. In response, I am introducing Intro 1095, which mandates that any injury or death to a civilian caused by NYPD must be reported to the Civilian Complaint Review Board within 24 hours of the injury. We must address pervasive trends and the lack of training our officers receive, especially in de-escalation of otherwise nonviolent situations. In risky interactions in our public spaces, we must set a precedence where de-escalation is the norm and innocent bystanders will be protected. The public safety of New Yorkers should be our utmost priority, and those who protect us should be accountable for their actions while serving and protecting others. I urge my colleagues to sign onto this bill to protect our fellow New Yorkers and commuters from preventable tragedy, and I thank Attorney Keith White for his swift and decisive support for the impacted families and Councilmember Chris Banks for cosponsoring this legislation. Thank you.
If you are leaving the chambers, please do so quietly. Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Salam, then Rivera.
Thank you very much. Intro 1091 would mandate that the Parks Department identify tree pits that are on streets and that have no trees in them. It should go that information onto the online tree map, which it does not exist, and every single year it should be updated. The reason I say that is because so often we see vacant tree pits, we do not have that data. Saturday is the City of Forests Day, when we raise awareness on the importance of our urban forest. Number two, you know, the people call all the time wanting trees in their vacant tree pits, and that information needs to go on the map. There is a map, but it needs a layer to identify these vacancies. This is about transparency and efficiency and equity, because if the tree pit is able to have a tree, that should indicate such, or if it's no longer viable because of a vault or something else, that should indicate as such. So I want to thank Trees New York, Big Reuse, and Nature Conservancy for their input and support of this legislation. And finally, I too want to thank HTC, but I also want to thank BJ Dandenapi, who's head of the Hotel Association, who also participated in the intro regarding the hotels. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam, followed by Rivera, then Marte.
Thank you. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, today I am proud to introduce Intro 10101, a critical bill aimed at addressing the growing problem of identity theft in our city. This legislation will require the NYPD to provide essential public information on identity theft and ensure that all officers are properly trained to handle complaints of identity theft and their related crimes. Identity theft is a serious issue that leaves many New Yorkers financially vulnerable and emotionally distressed. Too often victims don't know where to turn, and when they do, they need officers who are trained to help. This bill will guarantee that our police department is prepared to support these victims by providing clear guidance and thorough investigations, ensuring a more secure environment for all. I want to express my heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Crystal Hudson for joining me as co-prime sponsor of this bill. Her dedication to ensuring the safety and security of all New Yorkers is admirable, and it has been a privilege to work alongside her. Colleagues, I urge you to join us as cosponsors on this crucial legislation. Together, we can make a significant step towards protecting New Yorkers from the devastating impacts of identity theft. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Rivera, followed by Marte, then Williams.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today I'm introducing legislation which would require the Department of Social Services to include justice system involvement in the last 12 months, eligibility parameters for any existing supportive housing program administered and wholly funded by the city. Access to permanent and stable housing is a key component of well-being, and too often people with criminal legal system involvement face increased barriers to securing this housing. With some incarceration stays interrupting chronicity requirements, that really deters the facilitation of access to supportive housing. So supportive housing, as we all know, is an invaluable tool to support individuals in avoiding involvement with the criminal legal system, as well as reintegration with the community following incarceration or detention. And data shows that supportive housing results in fewer days spent in jail, shelter, and better individual outcomes all around, and it saves the government and taxpayers valuable funding. We must update our housing policies to be sensitive to these unique vulnerabilities and expand access to and investments in supportive housing across the board. I respectfully ask you to sign on as a cosponsor to this bill. I want to thank the pre-introduction cosponsors, Councilmembers Stevens, Hudson, Brewer, Nurse, Sanchez, and Narcisse, and of course, all the advocates and supporters who helped craft this bill. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Marte, followed by Williams, then Wrestler.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Today I'm introducing legislation that is not just a matter of policy, it's a matter of principle and justice. Intro 1096 seeks to protect the healthcare right of our retired municipal employees, individuals who dedicated decades of their lives to serving the people of New York City. From teachers to sanitation workers, from police officers to firefighters, they built this city, and they deserve to retire with dignity and the promise of reliable healthcare. For many of these retirees, healthcare is not a luxury, it is essential. We are talking about people who depend on their doctors and specialists for lifesaving treatments, individuals battling cancer, and others managing chronic conditions. Yet, the city is trying to push to strip them from their current Medicare benefits and force them into a Medicare Advantage plan that threatens to restrict their access to care. This is unacceptable. The city made a promise, a promise that after years of service, they will have a healthcare that they can rely on. But today, that promise is under threat. We cannot and will not allow them to be forced into a system that puts hurdle between them and their health. This is about more, this is more than just dollars and cents. It's about common sense and compassion. These retirees earned their benefits. They deserve to keep them. I ask my colleagues to stand with me today in solidarity with these retirees to keep the promise that was made to them and to pass this legislation so that no one who serves our city has to sacrifice their healthcare in their time of need. We owe this to them and nothing less. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Williams, followed by Wrestler, then Mealy.
Thank you. Today we stand at the intersection of empowerment, transparency, and recognition. We have not simply voted on legislative measures, but we have taken steps to uplift and empower our communities, to celebrate the brilliance within us, and to make this city a more transparent, equitable place. Thank you so much to my colleagues for voting on Intro 468 that demanded transparency from the Department of Transportation and in turn from our city government. We are saying that the people of New York deserve to know what is happening with the requests they make, whether for traffic control devices or speed reducers, because these decisions impact lives. Transparency is also a form of power, the power to know, to question, to demand change when it is needed. We must also look forward to the future toward the youth who will carry forward the work we are doing today. And so with Resolution 193, we declared October as Youth Empowerment Month in New York City. This is more just a symbolic gesture. It is a recognition of the potential, the brilliance, and the activism of our young people. It is about giving them the platforms they deserve, the space to lead, and the encouragement to build and thrive. We are laying the groundwork for a generation of conscious, empowered, and activated youth. And let us also take a moment to honor greatness and artistry. Today, with the resolution of 508, we designated October 10th as Casey Benjamin Day in New York City. Casey was a son of South Jamaica Queens, a product of our community. He created soundscapes that were informative and revolutionary. And I just wanted to acknowledge Lynette Townsley, who worked really hard on this. She's here today with the Jamaica NAACP Youth Division and Life Camp, and also the family of Casey Benjamin, who has joined us today. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I'll say firstly, go Liberty, go HTC, go Kevin Riley for 15 hours yesterday, go Madam Speaker for our new Charter Revision Commission legislation, which I'm very excited about to recalibrate the balance of power in city government and ensure that there's necessary oversight and accountability of the mayor's office. But I am happy to speak today about a bill that we're not passing, a bill that would have eliminated the reckless form that the mayor had imposed on elected officials at every level of government. Over the last number of months, it's been harder for me, and I believe each and every one of you, to just do our jobs, to advocate for our constituents, to ensure responsiveness from city agencies, to keep our communities safe and clean and healthy. This form was unnecessary bureaucracy, and frankly, it was a political tool to make it harder for elected officials to be effective. We have a responsibility to our constituents, and I am grateful that the administration came to its senses and agreed to eliminate the form once and for all. And so I just want to thank each and every one of my colleagues for cosponsoring this legislation. With 41 members in support of our legislation, it gave us the necessary leverage to be able to come to an agreement with the administration. And I want to thank the Speaker and her team for their strong support and partnership in this endeavor. So thank you very much, and very happy that we're not passing the bill today because we got it done through other means.
Recognizing Councilmember Mealy.
Yes, again, L-O-V-E, love, love should never hurt. In Observation of Domestic Violence Month, I'm devoted to recognizing and honoring victims and survivors of domestic violence, raising awareness of breast cancer, preventing bullying, educating people about Down Syndrome and disabilities, including international stuttering, and supporting women in the military. I was able to tour some of the domestic violence facilities where domestic abuse victims can start a new life in a long-term care facility, attend numerous meetings in my district on various topics such as mental health, financial literacy, aging, and housing, and providing training and job fairs, opportunities for survivors. In accordance, Mealy's Corner, empowerment, without town hall meeting that was so well-attended, it was only standing room only, I want to thank Madam Speaker for allowing the New York City Community Engagement Division with Danielle Procaro and Jeremy John for putting up with me in regards to getting flyers to make sure my community is empowered. We had such a great time and the community was informed. I want to thank the NYPD, the District Attorney Office, the 73rd precinct PSA 2, and our district leader Anthony T. Jones, and our Van Dyke Community Center allies with the President Lisa Kinner, and all the constituents came out and felt it was not robbery to be informed and empowered. Again, I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for supporting the 41st District. And to everyone, please be safe and think about others in this season, and go Liberties!
Thank you, Councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'd like to just give a good shout out and a great good luck to our Bronx Bombers this Friday on Game 1, and let's bring home number 28 World Series victory. And with that, silence in the chambers. And with that, I'll call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. We are a sports chamber today, aren't we? The stated meeting, the stated meeting of October 23rd is hereby adjourned.
Silence, silence in the gallery. Sargent, please, we are adjourned.